I have straight up six o'clock. Do you have six o'clock in the boardroom, Dr. Carlin?
We do.
Okay. Then I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. If you could please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I muted myself. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I take a motion to approve the agenda.
Alex, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the following amendments. Additional certified and classified personal actions for consideration, item E dash three.
Is there a second?
This is Janine. I'll second it.
Any discussion? Stephanie, would you call the roll?
Laura?
Aye.
Dr. Hannigan?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
No.
Thank you. This time, we have the recognition of Crystal Apple finalists. I see that we have Micah Bunch. Dr. Carlin, do we want to have Micah or is Roy there as well to introduce that? Or how do we want to proceed with that?
Madam President, I believe Micah Bunch, the president of the Garden City Chamber of Commerce, is joining us tonight, and she's going to kind of handle this for us this year. So, Mike, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carlin, and thank you, USD 457. What's that? Okay, USD 457 Board of Education. Really appreciate you allowing us the opportunity to visit with you tonight. As many of you know, this is the 25th anniversary of the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce Crystal Apple Teacher Recognition Program. This program looks to honor Finy County. Our committee with the Crystal Apple Program is made up of representatives from the business community who, like I said, look to honor outstanding teachers for their exceptional efforts in education this year. Even though normally with our process, we submit a call for nominations around February, March, and when we would have normally have sent the nomination forms home with students around spring break. Well, as everyone knows, we never went back to school after spring break. So, we were still really excited to receive 158 teacher nominations from the community this year. And so, our 2020 finalists, and I believe they're all on here tonight and with us. The first is, we have Elena Bates. She's with Horace Good Mental School. Diana Deniston, Jenny Wilson Elementary. Yuri Drabinski, Garden City High School. Melissa Hensley with Garden City High School. Mr. Bijou with Garden City High School. And Jane Schneider also with Garden City High School. Now, I can tell you that, and this is something that we say probably every year, that the selections get harder and harder. And I heard that from all three of our committees this year, is that our, the candidates, it just gets harder and harder every year to narrow down and have to, you know, select the top three teachers. Because the, our teachers are just phenomenal. We are truly blessed in this community with outstanding educators. So, the top three of the six finalists will be named as 2020 Crystal Apple Teachers of Finy County. Each of the three that, Crystal Apple Teachers will receive, obviously, an engraved Crystal Apple, a thousand dollar cash reward, and an iPad courtesy of Cox Communications. The three finalists will be presented with a frame certificate and an award of $250. So, the Crystal Apple ceremony has gone through a few changes this year. Normally, you know, we have an in-person banquet, but we're going to do the, this year, out of the COVID, due to COVID-19 precaution. We just feel that that's safer and respectful to all of our guests. So, you will be seeing more details about that for the next couple of days. And then finally, I, we could not do this without the support of USD 457 as well as USD 363. Both school districts are instrumental in helping the chamber put together this awards program every year. So, I'd really thank you, each and every one of you, for your support. And then, our sponsors. Our sponsors continue to grow with this program every single year. You know, they are great businesses in our community. They understand and they value our educators. And that is something that, you know, we hear time and time again. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to run through a list of our sponsors real quick. Of course, our presenting sponsor for about eight years now is Boers Law. Our media sponsor is Cox Communication. Gold sponsors is Commerce Bank, Finy County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Hutton Commerce, I already said Commerce Bank, and Fly Eye Associates. We have Wheatland Electric. We have Reeve Cattle, American State Bank, Dairy Farmers of America, Golden Plains Credit Union, Garden City Public Schools Foundation, Gibson Mancier, Michael and Nelson, Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick, the Garden City Public Schools Foundation, and Shepner's Water. And so, and American Implement. So, like I said, we could not do this without their support. You should feel very, very good knowing that the business community truly supports our educators. They always do an amazing job of helping us represent this program and couldn't, I'm just so excited. I love this program so much. It's one of the things that the chamber that we do that I love. But more than anything, we could not do this program without the support of Roy Sethon. He has been the committee chair for 17 years now. And I tell you, he is my right-hand man when it comes to putting everything Crystal Apple together. So, thank you for allowing him to be our committee chair and be a part of this program because he's just such a great, and I support. So, once again, thank you for your support. You have six amazing Crystal Apple teacher finalists this year. I do not know how the committees were able to make a decision. I would not have wanted to be a part of that. So, there are no losers in my book. There are all winners. And congratulations to the district because you sure do have some fantastic teachers.
Thank you, Micah. Madam President, can I make a comment or two?
Please, Dr. Carlin.
First, a huge thank you to the chamber. This, this event, this process is the envy of a lot of school districts across the state. It really speaks volumes about how our community values education and values our teachers. And so, I greatly appreciate the chamber's leadership. Thanks to all the sponsors who make this, who make this possible. And congratulations to the six finalists. It is really amazing. Alana, Yuri, Melissa, Diana, Bijou, and Jane, you, you really exemplify the quality, the quality teachers that we have in our community. The dedication to our students, to our families, and congratulations. I'm sorry that this year is going to be a little different in terms of how it all plays out, but that doesn't detract at all from the recognition that you're, you're receiving. And whether you're one of the three ultimate grand champions here, or you're just one of the regular champions, you truly are all champions. And, and thank you for your service to our profession and to the community. And we, we hope this whole COVID thing is a thing of the past soon, and, and we'll be looking for a way to make up the, some of the loss of the formality of this for you. I know that, that the chamber is interested in that as well. So, so thank you so much, and again, congratulations.
Well, I'd like to say congratulations to all of you as well. I was trying to get the list up really quickly too, so I had it in front of me. But I'm not finding just the list really quickly, and I'm sorry for that. So, I wanted to try to get everybody up, but I see it's just on YouTube. It's just the Brady Bunch screen. So, but congratulations, everyone. So, and we will look forward to seeing you on Zoom on November 19th. And I also believe that Dr. Watson will be zooming in as well for that event. So, I'm really excited for all of you. Would any of you like to say anything? Let's see, I'm kind of going through, and I think the first one I'm seeing is Bijou. Would you like to say anything? Okay. Melissa?
Definitely. Thank you for, you know, be part of such a wonderful thing. And I'm, I'm like, I'm honored to be part of this great group. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Melissa?
I'm just mimic, just mimic what Bijou said. Thank you for being such a great district. I love working here. I'm originally from Michigan, and I just haven't left yet. So, haven't gone back because it's just such a great family to be here.
I think my next one was Alana.
I just want to thank you guys, Micah and the chamber and the community. Laura, I know your business provides a lot for modeling for this crazy kid. How important education is and how much it's valued in Garden City. I can't imagine a better district to raise her in as a parent.
Well, thank you for all that you do. Mr. Drabinski and Yuri?
Yeah, just wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity and the opportunity to grow as a teacher and to be with some really good semifinalists and finalists as a Crystal Apple nominee. So, thank you.
Well, and good luck to your robotics team this week. I understand you're doing your competition this week.
Yeah, marketing and exhibit will present, and then we're competing with a robot next week virtually. So, should be an interesting experience.
Well, good luck.
Go get them, Yuri.
Thank you.
Jane, Mrs. Schneider?
Mute my thing. Yes, just thank you so much. It's a, it's a wonderful district, and we have great kids, including most of you guys. I've got the privilege of doing that. And it's just really, just really an honor that you have let me have your kids to, to help raise. I, I love them very much.
Mrs. Deniston?
This community, this school district is amazing. You help teachers to become the best they can be. You give teachers wings, and that in turn gives students wings. It's a tremendous honor. I love this district. It's, it's just been an opportunity to grow so much as an educator. The community support is amazing, and I'm just praise God for being a part of it, and thank you so much.
Did I miss anyone? Well, thank you all. We really appreciate all that you do for our kids, and best of luck in a couple of weeks. We'll look forward to seeing you all then. So, good luck.
Thank you.
I think that takes us to our building presentation with Garfield Early Childhood Center and Mrs. Baker.
All right. Well, thank you for letting me be on to share tonight about Garfield. I love working at Garfield. I was a teacher here and now as the principal. It's a fantastic place to work. The staff that is in this building is absolutely amazing. They go above and beyond every day, and I'm just very appreciative of that. This was our theme this year, so our school shirts say this. We were created for such a time as this. Just with going to remote last spring and all of the unknowns, and then starting the school this year and knowing there was going to be a lot of unknowns that we were going to go through this year. We just knew this is what we were created for, and we're going to get through it together and work together. And the next slide, you can see our numbers for enrollment and staff. So, on the left side, you can see in February what our numbers were before spring break, and then what our numbers are currently. At the top there on the right, you can see we've added a remote classroom. So, we do have two teachers that are teaching remote this year for preschool. And we have 51 students currently enrolled in the remote. I believe at the beginning of the school year, we were almost to 65 students. So, students were, students and families were able to try that and do have the option to come back into the school building. And we do want to make sure we're, we're meeting their needs, and if they were struggling on remote, getting them back into the school building face-to-face. Looking down at our total number of students right now, we're at 486. So, that is less than we've had in the years past. But of course, with this just being a different year, we have had less kiddos coming through our monthly screenings as to be expected with COVID. And students who might not qualify as far as being on an IEP but could qualify to be in one of our other classrooms. Parents have just said they are just going to wait until next year and kind of see what's going on then. And this week, with going to Level Five Hybrid Learning, there was a lot of anxiety and, and stress with staff, just as we have not done hybrid before. So, of course, learning something new. I went around this morning with special delivery for, for all the staff. Just to bring them a little sunshine and kind of help calm the nerves. So, each classroom was able to pick out some flowers to have to help get through the day. And this week with our hybrid learning, each Monday morning, I send out an email with motivational quote or some funny picture. And this morning, I just reassured all the staff, you know, nobody's looking for perfection through any of this, but we are looking for reflection. So, definitely after each day, reflecting on what they want to adapt or change for the next day and just continuing to get better each day through this. The next slide has a couple pictures where you can see our students that were learning from home or on the screen. So, the teacher was going through, reading the story, showing the pictures, asking questions, working on vocabulary. And the students in the classroom then could also see their friends learning at home, and friends learning at home could see their friends in the classroom. Here is one of our remote teachers. So, she's got her green paper behind her in this picture. She tries to put a picture behind her that goes with the theme that we're learning about. And so, our theme's been about nature, and today they were going to be reading a story about a squirrel. And so, she had a, a theme on her background that went with that. The next slide is our other remote teacher. So, here she was creating a video. Believe they were working on colors or sharing. The little animals have different colored markers. Something new that our remote teachers did try, starting last week, was doing breakout rooms with our three, four, and five-year-olds. So, they're able to go in and create who they want in each breakout room. And then, an adult is in each room with the student, so the teachers and the parents. They said it went very, very well. The kids loved it. It was something different for them, being in that smaller group and having a little extra time to maybe share individually than they had had being in such a large group. So, that's definitely something our remote teachers are going to share with our teachers that are doing hybrid, so that they could also maybe try that with their students. Here you can see, this is just a small group learning in the classroom. The teachers, of course, this year tried to have the students spaced out. So, there's little colored stickers on the tables to help kids know where they need to be at. And here again, they were just learning about nature. They had gone out on a nature walk, and they had collected these different items. And so, just a lot of vocabulary and using different tools that they would use in science, magnifying glasses and different things. And then, the kids were going to write in their journals after that. There's another small group activity going on in the classroom. You can see the kiddos with their masks on. I know that was something at the very beginning of the school year. Teachers were worried about how were three and four-year-olds going to keep their masks on, and the kids have done absolutely amazing. And I just credit it to the great examples that they have in the classroom with, with the teachers and the staff promoting that for the students. Next slide again is another small group going on in the classroom. So, a lot of hands-on activities going on. The next slides are of centers going on. When our students go to our different centers, they're staying with their same small group at each center. Before they rotate to any center, they use hand sanitizer, so their hands are always clean before they're going to each center. Here we've got retelling of the story, working on shapes, their pattern blocks, and our block centers, building houses that go along with the story. We've got kids working on fine motor skills with Play-Doh. And again, fine motor skills with some different put-in tasks or pushing buttons, putting small items into a container. Next slide, have students writing and working on the iPad. Some more that are drawing and building with blocks. So, you definitely see students spaced out and in smaller groups than what we would normally have on a given year. So... Here's our music and movement. Both classes through the KPP grant that we have, we were able to add another staff position for this class. Normally, well, last year, we would have multiple classrooms of students going into one teacher. And knowing that we were going to need to keep students separated this year into their class and have kids spaced out, we were able to add that extra position. So, here they both are. You can see all the different tape marks and things on the line to help kids know to space out. One of the things that we're really working on this year is that self-care. So, right now, we've got a self-care bingo going on in our, in our building. Just trying to promote fun games like that, have prizes that are going to be self-care prizes. So, on any year, we definitely want self-care, but this year, definitely promoting that with our teachers. Some of the professional development that's going on, our teachers are doing through Zoom is through Southwest Plains Regional Service Center. We've had some teachers attend a language acquisition training. This week, they're going to be doing a purposeful play training. And then, with our LINK grant, this would be the third year that we would have staff able to attend our National Early Childhood Conference. This year, it would have been in Florida. But we have staff that are able to do it online, and it actually started all day yesterday. And they had trainings today and tomorrow. So, those are just a few of the topics that they have learned so far. And the staff that are attending those, of course, will get together and then plan what information that they would like to share with the rest of our staff on probably one of our building professional development days or multiple building professional development days. We're still giving the ASQ, which is a requirement from the state. You can see how many of the ASQs we received. 251 of the ASQ threes, 224 of the ASQs. This kind of happened last year also. The ASQ three is the assessment, the, or the survey that the parents are click on first. And so, I think a lot of them think that once they're finished with that first one, they're finished, and so, then they don't go on to do that ASQ three. And it is time-consuming. It does take a little bit to sit down and go through it. And we have encouraged parents multiple times. We started off getting as many as we could to do it online, and then we went to handing out paper copies. One thing, we really wanted to get that number up this year from last year. So, we were hoping that we were going to have families come into our building, and we were going to have stations set up in our gym and have staff that were one-on-one with those families, walking them through the surveys and showing them how to do those activities with their kiddos, and then transferring that onto the survey. But with COVID, we were not able to do that this year. So... But that information we do use. We have kiddos going through our student assistant team if there's any concerns there. We also gave the FastBridge assessment, and we've given that the last few years. Those are the different subtests that we give with that. And then, our PPVT assessment, we were able to give that online this year. So, that is something different for us. We're able to use an iPad, and the student is able to touch the iPad on the answer that they want to give. And as soon as those assess- assessments are done, it already scores it uh, for the teachers. So it was more uh, efficient doing the online this year. So that was something that was really nice. Um, those are a few of the things that are going on at Garfield. So are there any questions or any more that you would like to know?
Any questions?
Do you want me to just speak out? This is Dana.
Sure.
Um, I just noticed the numbers for the ESL and the Spanish classes were pretty low. Is there a reason for that?
I'm not sure why it was so much lower this year. I know um, with our Spanish class, those kiddos are gonna feed into Buffalo Jones. So I don't know if it was just the same with a lot of, you know, parents just wanting their kids to be at home this year. Um, I know there were quite a few, just with all the unknowns, not knowing if we were gonna be face-to-face or if it was only gonna be a few weeks or what, and they needed something consistent. Um, if they work. And so if they, you know, just had their kids go to daycare this year.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Any other questions?
Hi, this is Mark. I have a question.
Okay.
Um, you know, I noticed, I think the answer is very similar to what you just explained for Dana. But um, I noticed there was a drop in almost ninety girls enrolled versus boys in your drop in enrollment. Do you think it's that same situation that parents are just electing to keep their kids at home?
Yeah, I mean, when they've come through screenings, those parents we've been able to talk to that aren't enrolling. Yeah, they're just like, well, we're just gonna wait and see what happens next year or so.
Okay, thank you, Principal Baker.
Too. I, I mean, when we look back at when we started school. Um, I don't know if there was so much data that had been collected on kids getting COVID yet or you know, we didn't have a lot of information on the numbers yet. And so they just decided they would stay home.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Baker. We appreciate your time and all your efforts for those kids. It's really appreciated.
You're welcome. It's fun.
Well, stay safe and healthy.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think that takes us to correspondence. Stephanie, was there any correspondence?
No.
Thank you. Um, which takes us up to the consent agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it. This is Janine.
Motion by Alex and second by Janine. Any discussion? Stephanie, would you call the roll?
Laura.
Aye.
Dr. Hannigan?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Okay, so I think that takes us to um, the Avid program and Jenny Hands. Mrs. Hands?
All right, good evening. Um, I have a brief update on Avid for you all. Um, and excited to talk to you about what we've done so far in those first few months. Um, so um, so our focus has been on what we're calling bite-sized professional development. Um, we wanna do things that are um, simple and actionable and things that actually can cause um, change in a classroom when you walk back in. So not something you need to um, spend a lot of time studying in order to implement. We want it to be something that is quick and easy to learn. Um, that's going to make significant change in our education with our teachers, but not be overwhelming in this time of year. Um. One of the things that I think that we're in our second year of this, but I just wanna reiterate as the director how um, good of a decision I think this was by our district. That our Avid coordinators, we have three of them, one in each building that has Avid, are also our instructional coaches. And so everything they do as far as PD goes hands in hand. Um, and they are great at being sneaky. Um, and all of their PD has Avid in it and layers and layers and layers. And sometimes you don't even know it and then you think about it. Oh, that is Avid. Um, so our coordinators are awesome and that was such a good decision that our district made to combine those roles. Um, and it's just been really great for the program. And so, oh, I already said that. The strategies are integrated into the activities. Um, for example, we have innovation challenges going on. So it's a elective professional development that teachers can be a part of. And so the three that have been done and led by Dr. Duncan this year are um, the topics were collaborate and connect, which Avid's um, WICER uh, collaboration is right in those, in that acronym that we're um, already trying to promote. Um, and then driven by rigor, of course, we're working on increasing rigor in our classrooms. And the current um, in innovation challenge for this month is checks for understanding strategies for high-impact learning. Um, the coordinators also are working on the PLC process with teachers, which is teacher-driven and focused on student learning, exactly aligning with Avid. We did have the opportunity for new teacher training. All um, seven, twelve new teachers uh, received introductory professional development about Avid at the beginning of the year. So they at least have a little bit of an idea of what we're talking about when we bring up Avid. Um, and then we are soon going to be starting WICER Wednesday where teachers can sign up um, to either digitally or in person, have teachers, other teachers who are in their off hour come and see a lesson that involves WICER strategies that you're, they're using well. And again, WICER strategies, because I know we use so many acronyms in education. Uh, WICER is the um, the key strategies that Avid um, promotes and tries to give you great uh, instructional strategies for. And it stands for writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. Um, and so if a teacher is using an avid strategy that promotes WICER in their classroom, they can sign up and have other teachers come to watch them. And as I said, it could be digital. So they could um, invite teachers into their classroom or they can record it and have that available to teachers later. Um, another thing we started this year, oh, sorry, I'm skipping ahead of myself. I should read. Uh, it is another thing we did this year, Avid training. We've done that every year, but this year it was virtual. So that was new. Um, and this was back in June and also July. Um. And so that was really the, the beginning. The Avid was one of the first to do online virtual national conference level. Um, and so we were a little concerned how that might go. And so we only had our new Avid elective teachers attend um, so that we could meet the Avid requirements of having them trained and then to see how well it went. Dr. Dun, Dr. Jenny Duncan and myself also attended. Um, they did a really good job. Um, it was a good training, not quite as great as being in person. You know, my favorite part is meeting someone else who's in a similar role and sharing ideas back and forth. And although they tried to have that collaboration as a part of it online, that part was missing. Um, but it was still a great opportunity for our teachers, for our new teachers. Um, unfortunately, it wasn't a large group that we got to send this year. Um, at that time, we were hoping that things might open up and we'd be able to send um, some of our elective teachers to smaller in-person trainings as they become available. They still haven't. Um, but we're hoping that that can be something that will uh, be available soon or just in the future. Um, Avid has been great about offer, offering multiple virtual opportunities. Um, one of the things that they have done is making their national conference, which is different than their summer institute. Um, they're doing that online and free to everyone to attend. Um, so that's something I'm excited about. Um, I've never been able to make it to the national conference. And so just to have the opportunity to get a glimpse into what that is like, um, I'm excited to uh, be a part of that and also excited that it's free. So then the new thing that we're trying this year to focus on our bite-sized professional development is to do Twitter chats. Um, I have noticed that these are um, used a lot in other districts. We've tried it some in Garden City, but we decided to really focus on it for Avid. Um, something that you can do at home, on your own time, in your pajamas and get PD points. Um, it's just an hour of your time. Um, and they have been really good. Uh, so they're monthly, they're at home, they're engaging and they're thoughtfully crafted. Um, centered, centered around a central theme. So our first one was on building student collaboration skills. Our second one, which was just last week, was culturally responsive classroom practices. And coming up on November seventeenth at three thirty PM, please join us for developing meaningful writing-to-learn experiences in every class. And you all are welcome. Follow us at four five seven Avid. Shameless plug. Um, so I just wanted to show you a little bit of what these Twitter chats look like. Um, they're really truly bite-sized. Um, but we've had some really good response to it. Um, so in our first Twitter chat, the first question was, what is the difference between collaboration and group work? Um, a lot of times we think that if we have students in groups, they are collaborating and that is not always true. Um, so sorry, my screen is covering that up. Uh, so our Avid middle school teacher at uh, Horace Good said to me, collaborating means all students work together to achieve a common goal. They share responsibility. Uh, work group or group work means they split the work and then unfortunately, a couple of students can end up with the bulk of the work. Um, you can also see that Avid chats are fun, um, because you can share gifs and memes and other things on them and that are related and it keeps it lighthearted and interesting. Another question um, on our collaboration Twitter chat was, how can technology be used to facilitate student collaboration? And one thing that we've done is try to make sure that each Twitter chat has uh, at least one question, if not more, that connects to um, to a hybrid or remote situation. Um, so for this question, um, one of our teachers, Mr. Burnfin, said, I had some pretty good success with students sharing Google Slides to collaborate on something. Today, my Avid classes worked on the tutorial process using a word splash on slides. Um, and this is one of the great things about uh, Twitter chat is that Dr. Duncan was able to um, jump onto that and and recommend talking to Mr. Lee about a template that has a breakup, breakout room setup already created. Um, so it's a great uh, platform to work together to come up with some new ideas. Um, in our last Twitter chat, we, which is my favorite so far, but we've only had two. Um, well, the question was, what is the difference between having a positive classroom culture and building a culturally responsive classroom? And so Mr. and I said, a positive classroom culture is how students find commonalities in your class. A culturally responsive classroom means respecting and understanding students' cultures and differences and providing them a space to share who they are. Ms. Johnson said to me, a positive classroom culture focuses more on how the group interacts together. A culturally responsive classroom is more about using curriculum and instructional practices that are designed to reach all students where they're at. And finally, Dr. Duncan said, I think a positive classroom culture is about relationships. While a culturally responsive classroom has more to do with classroom practices, there's way more depth than that. That's my simple version. And another question we asked um, to connect it to um, the different operational levels in our district was, in light of our current school environment, how have you adapted your practices to maintain a culturally responsive classroom? Um, so Mr. Allinger, our French teacher, said, I try to give all of my students a chance to see themselves in my curriculum. I want them all to feel like they are central to the curriculum as well. And then I picked this one specifically to show you how cool Twitter chats are. Um, because the response of how do you do this was not someone from our district. Um, and they jumped in and engaged in our conversation. Um, and uh, encouraged Mr. Allinger to get a little deeper and explain exactly um, what it was that he was talking about. And he said, and when learning, I use what we are talking about to allow them to talk about themselves in French. As well as I pay attention to the people I use to represent French culture, so that they resemble all identities my students identify as. So, as I said, um, join us for our next one. It's November seventeenth at three thirty on Twitter. Um, and our topic will be developing meaningful writing-to-learn experiences in every class. Um, so one of the things we're gonna be exploring is that Avid doesn't talk about writing. They call it writing-to-learn. And so what is the difference between writing and writing-to-learn? And that's something we're going to be exploring. I thought that you may have some questions about how COVID has affected Avid. So these are the things I anticipated. Um, so those Twitter chats we developed as a response to COVID specifically. Again, um, teachers being able to be at home, we're completely socially distanced. Um, and it's a safe place where we can continue to focus on our professional development. Um, when necessary, those innovation challenges that our um, coordinators are leading and instructional coaches are leading, they can be done remotely when necessary. Um, so that we can continue teacher learning. Um, and this one I think is really smart. Our Avid elective teachers have been using technology to conduct their tutorials while we've been in person. Um, the same way they will be conducting them in the hybrid or remote a situation. Um, so that when we transition, that student learning is not interrupted. They don't need to learn a new format. Um, and if you're unfamiliar, the um, tutoring or the tutorial sessions in the Avid elective, it's a huge part. It's, it's done two days out of the week each week. So um, that is a significant amount of time. So making sure that um, the students are ready and prepared to do that, I think was very smart and forward-thinking on our teacher's part. Um. Also, uh, for sixth and eighth grade students, we won't be able to send a whole group of students to uh, recruit students the way we have in the past. Um, and so our juniors and seniors are working on a virtual recruitment video to use with the sixth and eighth grade students. Um. Also, um, I anticipated you might ask about how remote and blending, blended learning models have impacted our enrollment. Um, and I apologize because I thought about this uh, this afternoon. So this is information from the high school. I didn't have easy access to these numbers from the middle school. Um, if you specifically want to know, I can get that for you, just not in the time crunch I had when I thought that you might want to read this. Um, so this is interesting. We have ninety-nine students in the high school enrolled in Avid. Eleven of those are remote and four are blended. Um, and those blended, those four blended students are blended and are not attending Avid during their blended day. Um, so what we've done is those students who aren't there um, are not, there's no online version of Avid. So they're not enrolled in Avid, but it, when they return to onsite learning, they will be back in the Avid class as though they never left. So our freshman Avid class uh, has forty-nine students. Four of them are remote, one of them is blended. So we have ten percent of the freshman class gone, which is not out of line. Um, but what I want to point out, um, just so that we But what I want to point out, just so that we are all aware, is that our sophomores have had a significant interruption by remote and blended. So out of 22 students who have been enrolled in Avid that were freshmen who chose to continue to sophomore year, six of them are remote, three are blended, which comes to 41% of that class being remote or blended. So missing out on Avid, the instructional class this year. And so that's something I am, we will be watching and making sure that those students stay caught up with their class. The teachers still reach out to those students, but it's not the traditional. They're not enrolled in that class this year. Then, of course, our juniors are 15 students, one remote, zero blended, so 6%. And our senior avid class has 13 students and none of them are remote or blended. Some of the things that we are working on this year are still facing. One is engaging more teachers in avid Twitter chats. I think Twitter chats are just new for everyone. We're also kind of experimenting, you may have noticed if you've been following us, that we've tried a few different time slots. I think the first was at 7:00 PM, the second was at 8:00 PM. And now we're doing one at 3:30 PM. We're trying different days of the week, you know, just trying to figure out when do we get the most participations, when are teachers most engaged and most interested and available for Twitter chats? And we've tried to analyze it, but everyone is in different stages of their life. And in different stages, different nights are available and different nights art. So we'll probably continue to just jump around on the calendar, trying to find something that works at least once for everyone. From last September, when we were able to bring Avid in, of those teachers who were trained and stayed, we have 80% of our students, or not students, teachers, are trained. And we've discussed how we're going to maintain that number. We haven't set anything in stone. And I think part of that is just, we don't know what avid training is going to be offered. Currently, they are not offering what we did back in September, where they send trainers to districts due to COVID. And we're not sure if they'll be having a summer institute. So it's hard to make a plan without knowing what the options are. So that's just kind of on hold right now. But something that we're definitely thinking about and hoping to plan for well. A challenge that we always have, I think we will continue to always have, is that Avid expects expects students who are currently enrolled in a traditional four-year university to be in the classroom with the students as tutors two days a week. And it should be one student or one tutor for every five to seven students. And if you think about our geographic location and the number of students who are currently enrolled in a four-year traditional university program, it's not many. We do work with the community college and try to have tutors come in from there. It does, it does not quite meet the avid expectations, but it works enough for them. But we, we continue to have that challenge. We will, I think, always continue to have that challenge. We have tried something new this year with peer mentors. So older students in our school that weren't necessarily avid students, but who are good students are enrolled as tutors in some of our classes, and that has been going very well. And then another challenge is, as last year happened and March happened, our current juniors, they were sophomores last year. They missed out on going on their sophomore and college visit trip. And it looks like they will likely miss out on going on their junior college visit trip. So but by the time our current juniors are seniors, they should have visited seven schools, wait, no, six, sorry, six schools. And they will have visited one. So as soon as that opportunity opens up for our students to travel, we anticipate taking on our juniors on more college trips in their senior year than any other class gets as the schedule goes through, just to try to catch them up and help them make an informed decision. And I'd like to end by just thanking you so much for your support of Avid. Helping us bring the training in last year in September has been so influential in how successful Avid has been. And just I appreciate all of your support and believing in the program. It's going well. And with that, any questions?
I'll just open it up.
Jenny, I have a question.
Yes.
Has the Avid program responded to COVID in any way with a parent component? So sharing different strategies that parents can use with students that are similar to maybe, I mean, I know it can't be exactly like the classroom, but.
No, I have not seen anything come out directed specifically to parents from Avid. I think that's a great idea. I have not seen that. They have shared quite a few resources where students could log, students are invited to log on or they've made sure to link if a college has a virtual visit. Avid has been sending that out so students can participate if they're interested. Typically, they are coastal schools that are participating in that. But if our students are interested, they have that opportunity to join in.
So is it only students enrolled in Avid that can access those type of resources and opportunities?
Students who are enrolled in Avid, actually. They, no, it's not just those students. Those are the students that have the easiest access, I'd say, to get the information because their avid teacher is aware of it. But they can, you know, any student would be able to. And with my position here and my location in the Career Center, we have college visits going on, actually. Every day until Thanksgiving break, we have a college scheduled. And those are our local community colleges and four-year universities here in the state of Kansas. And we have a great office assistant who has reached out and made sure to make sure those opportunities are available. And we are zooming those with our hybrid students. Any student in the school is able to sign up for those. But if a student comes in and is really interested in a specific school and they talk about it, I'll be able to know, oh, they had an avid virtual visit and I could get them connected if need be.
Is that something that parents are informed about, like those opportunities? And I only ask because I think my, I don't know that my kid always takes advantage of opportunities unless I expressly tell her to take advantage of opportunities. Is that something?
Yeah, as a Career Center staff, we always appreciate, we love to laugh when it's, my mom said I needed to come in and sign up for whatever it is. We, we love that and we say, you have a very smart mom.
Can you tell my kid that she does?
Ms. Armstrong, she does a counselor's newsletter every week. And those, all of the colleges that are coming or virtually visiting within the next week, that information is in that counselor's newsletter.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Okay, well, thank you, Mrs. Hands, for spending the time and putting this together today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. And again, thank you so much for supporting the Avid program. We greatly appreciate it.
Well, have a good night and stay safe and healthy.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, I think now we're going to Mr. Norby and Mr. Felbus for the graduation rate report.
Yeah, I'm gonna start things off here. This is Steve Nordby from the high school and I'm going to share my screen and put our presentation on there for you. All right, I'm hoping you guys can all see Garden City High School graduation rates presentation there. As I said last month, when we talked about post-secondary success, this is the second component that we'll be presenting to you on this year with our KISA district accreditation. The graduation rate is definitely one of our top factors for that. Just to review, some of you have seen this before that are, have been on, been on the board before. But our graduation rate is calculated using a very simple, straightforward formula. We take the graduates that graduated during this year, 2020, and divided them by the kids that started four years earlier. We take out the transfers and add in some folks that move in. But generally, when you start the clock as a high school student, you've got four years. And we know from our district and especially as migratory as our population can be, as many different factors that we have here, especially in Garden City. You know, one size fits all doesn't always work for our kids, but that is the formula. Every school across the nation is judged by this, by this formula right here. As I said, we've got a lot of factors affecting our graduation rate. We have a very migratory population. Of course, all the different languages that are spoken in our community and by families within our high school. That's something that it makes things difficult sometimes. Something that works in our favor is our layout and especially our freshman academy, keeping the students down in freshman land and keeping a close look at them and working as much as we can to determine through their plans of study, what they're interested in, what their, what their programs might be that they would like to know more about. And before they head out to their sophomore, junior, senior year. I think our senior conferences and our plans of study have had a positive impact on, on graduation rate. Having those conversations with kids early, get them thinking about what happens next. What happens after they leave our building? Having some alternate pathways for these kids, such as a virtual pathway and an alternative school, that definitely helps. As I said, one size fits all doesn't always work. Having a one-size-fits-all, this is, this is the high school and this is your only option, may not work for some kids. They may need a different, a different look at things. The truancy diversion program, working with families, working with kids to, to stay in school and see the benefits of finishing school, that's a positive. And this is something that it's tough to do alone. And so our community partnerships, such as JAG and communities and schools, that's definitely a positive thing for us. We can, you know, use all the help we can get as far as working with kids, working with families to, to help them move forward in their education. Another factor that was kind of different this year with COVID and things was the 21 credit adjustment that the board approved in March, early April. Due to the pandemic, we weren't sure how we were going to provide our normal safety nets for students. Many of our graduates already have what they need to graduate before their second semester of high school. Many of them do, but some of them, some of them don't. And every year, we have students who rely on some of those two, those two safety nets of semester school, extending their semester by a couple of weeks. Try to give them time to earn that credit. But also, if they are not successful there, we have a few every year that require a summer session to earn their credits for graduation. And if you notice on the graduation rate formula, actually, the clock keeps ticking for kids until September 30th. So a summer program can go all the way through to the end of September and still count a kid towards the class of 2020 graduation. Well, we didn't know if we were going to be able to offer those things this year. In March, we had no idea how we were going to be offering those extra programs. So you, as a board, providing the grace to those students who would have relied on those programs made a difference for them. They may well have graduated anyway, but the stress of kind of, well, in some cases, having the rug pulled out from underneath them, 15, 16ths of the way through a high school career. You know, that was, that was tough on our kids and tough on our families. And so that, that made a difference for a number of students who would have relied on those programs that we just weren't sure how we were going to offer. So here we are, and please know that these numbers are incomplete because we don't have the state numbers yet. All we have are the class of 2020 for our, our schools. So here we are over the, over the last five years with our composite Garden City High School versus the state of Kansas. I'm not sure how many times we've been over 90% as a building graduation rate, but I don't think since I've been here, we have, we've been there, maybe, maybe we have, but I'm not, I'm not too sure about that. I think this is as high as we've gotten. Here we are, the state will also calculate a five-year graduation rate for us. It doesn't really get us much of anything as far as accountability and accreditation, but they do calculate it. So for those kids, those are kids that would have been in the class of 2019, but weren't able to make it. A couple of them did end up graduating in a, in a fifth year. We do get some reports and what I'll present to you are our major subgroups. In order to be a subgroup, you've got to have at least 30 students in it. And so I'll present to you some of the major subgroups that we try to take a look at as we do a dive into our graduation numbers each year. As far as the white or Caucasian subgroup, we graduated them at 93%, just over 93% for the class of 2020. In our Hispanic subgroup, we were close to 90%. Free and reduced lunch is one of our largest subgroups. And to be close to 90% there is great for us. That is one that is, that is very large. And that is kind of, I guess, sometimes a hard target to hit because those students, due to federal rules, aren't really identified for us. That subgroup is reported, but I can't tell you who was in that subgroup. We aren't able to have that information. One of our other large subgroups is the English Language Learners, ESL subgroup. So for that subgroup to be close to 90% is also a, a big thing for us, making a difference there. And then our students with disabilities is actually one of our, it's one of our smaller subgroups. That is, is over 30 kids, though. There may be 35 to 40 in that subgroup. And so that group took a big jump during this year with a couple more kids graduating than is normal for that subgroup. So next steps for us in taking a look at the data is try to continue to identify trends. Try to, with our SAT teams, take a look and do some early warning and some intervention work with moms and dads. The two big factors for students and graduation is during the first part of school, the first nine weeks or so of school, having an out-of-normal or out-of-usual attendance rate, but then also failing one, failing two or more classes. And so trying to target those kids for early intervention. And then, of course, continue the partnerships with our JAG and Communities and Schools program. Try to, you know, take any of their outside assistance, outside help and mentoring students and partnering with them best we can. Those are the high school numbers. I can either take questions now or turn it over to Mr. Felbus to share the data for the Alternative Center, whichever one you prefer.
And why don't we go on to Mr. Felbus and then we can take questions on everything at the end.
Okay, give me one second and I'll get our slideshow up here. Okay, so very, very similar, very similar show, slideshow to what Mr. Nordby had just shared. There's the exact same formula of how everything is figured. And some of the factors, again, like at GCHS, some of these work in our favor, some of them. And uh some of the factors, again, like at at GCHS, some of these work in our favor, some of them um not so much. Um, the migratory population, we, we are always a twenty-one credit. Uh, we have a twenty-one credit graduation model for our students. Um, social emotional state of our students and our current reality of COVID is another factor that um that we, we emphasize a lot on. Um, one thing that's worked, I think, very well in our favor is the increased electives that we now offer our students. Um, at the last meeting, we talked a a lot about our automotive program, but we also now offer a face-to-face Spanish class, uh face-to-face art, a walking class. Uh, we have a a read one eighty program now that's brand new where we can identify students who are lower level readers and actually get them the electives that will not only give them the credits they need, but but benefit them with with an improved level of of reading and and reading comprehension. Um, we have a adult diploma completion program with our virtual program here in the, in the Alternative Education Center. And you'll see here in a minute on another slide that that is a big factor when you look at the number of of individuals in our building that are earning diplomas. Um, a lot of that does also come from the, the adult education, the continuing education program that Mrs. Mormon has in in the virtual school. A couple of things we did different last year to um help with with the whole shutdown in the spring was uh we, we were able to do a, a limited structure course over the summer, basically a save the grade where we were basically allowed to do um socially distanced summer school with our students. And um we were able to um provide a little bit of that last chance for our students to finish when they were, like Mr. Nordby said, so close to to finishing. And we really think they would have have the, had the year been um a little more normal to to what what we would have been doing in the spring. And then our partnerships again with the community college, opening up dual credit for our kids. The FCDC, we work a lot with them. Uh, students who, who have been expelled or 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 removed from their, their neighborhood school through virtual, sometimes even through actual attendance, um, when their expulsion is over, but we work, we work a lot with the FCDC. We also have JAG in our building and as I talked a couple of weeks ago, a new instructor and um re- revamping that program again. And then our, our partnership with with Garden City High School, um, looking at a, a revamped approach of, of working to get a, a, a district graduation rate going up as opposed to one building versus the other. And I think so far it's been a, it's been a win-win for both buildings. Uh, their numbers were up slightly and you'll see that ours, ours are as well. And so it's, it's a very a very cohesive collaborative effort that we have there. Here's our graduation data. Um, two thousand twenty is there highlighted in red at the bottom. Um, when, when I arrived the start of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, we, we
I'm sorry, Mr. Felbus, your um screen isn't control, going on with your slideshow. It's still showing just the, the, your first slide, so it's not continuing on.
Okay, let me let me start over. Did that change any?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so our data there on this new slide is um highlighted in red there. Um, when I got here in, in, at the end of the two thousand eighteen school year, we, we were, we were greeted, I was greeted with a forty-one point seven and um we were, we were deemed a, a school in need of improvement. Um, our first year, we were able to raise that to fifty-four point five. And again, with, with some of the factors and some of the partnerships and growth that we have, um, you'll see we are currently as a building sitting at sixty-seven point seven for our, our graduation rate at the end of, of last school year. Our five-year graduation rate maintained pretty close, slightly up at fifty-six point seven. And then um you can see there, like I talked about, the adult continuation program as well as our, our increase in student population. Um, we, we did, we, we graduated sixty-nine kids the first, the first year that, that, that I was here in Garden City and and our staff last year worked their tails off and we were able to to graduate a hundred and nine students in, in our entire building. Um, here in a, here in a slide from a couple more slides, you'll, you'll see the breakdown specifically between us and virtual. Mrs. Boers, did it change?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Great. So um this is a, this is just another little bit more of a breakdown. Um, again, we'll focus mainly on two thousand twenty. Um, the, the trend kind of virtual, unfortunately, it actually lowers our graduation rate just slightly, but um it boosts the numbers of of diplomas earned because because of that adult completion program that, that we, that we have. But last year, you'll see that the alternative high school alone on that very, very top red bar, um, we were right at seventy percent. And then um virtual there, sixty-five point four for the building rate of sixty-seven point seven. And and you can kind of see that the, the virtual is, is slightly, slightly lower um because of the ma- the, the, the vast number of, of, of students that they accept. It's, it's harder for those kids to um, to help increase that number. Another factor that, that is out there is that when kids do unfortunately get expelled from, from their, their home building, um either GCHS or the alternative high school, they are given the opportunity to continue their education through our enrollment or through our virtual program. Um, if that student never returns back to their originally um established homeschool or neighborhood school, then they unfortunately become a dropout of the last school that they attended. Um, so unfortunately for virtual, uh, it, 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 you know, it is what it is. It's just a, a part of, of, of giving those second chances, but their number, their graduation rate is often hurt by, by those students that that were previously expelled that never go back to finish at their, at their uh original school setting. You see, it, it flipped now exactly opposite, um where, where the alternative high school was slightly ahead of virtual. You'll see here, um, the black bar is the number of graduates that we had in the past five years and um the gray bar is the number of virtual diplomas and and then, of course, the, I guess it's more of an orange than a red in this slide, but that's the alternative high school. Um, so the alternative high school, our numbers are still going up, but, but still are, aren't really compared to the numbers of, of the virtual program. And I, I, I believe um in checking with Mrs. Mormon the other day, of the seventy diplomas that were earned last year in the virtual academy, I believe somewhere in the mid twenties were adults in the community that came back to finish their high school uh requirements to earn their diplomas. It's really, really neat to see around graduation time because some, some of the virtual students are so dedicated and so committed to finishing and being a part of graduation. We actually had a student who um a, an adult, a, a young adult who, who went into, into labor early, had her missed graduation rehearsal because she had her baby late Thursday night. So she missed rehearsal on Friday morning and called the school that Friday afternoon um asking us and kind of begging Mrs. Mormon that she could still walk on Saturday morning. Um, you know, less than forty-eight hours after, after having, having a child, uh graduation meant so much to her that, 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 you know, she, she wanted to participate in that ceremony and it was, so we were so fortunate that we were able to, to, to provide that for her as well as um, you know, I think we had about eighty students participate out of the hundred and nine that earned diplomas. So kind of need, need experiences like that, that, that you really, really enjoy in, in this, you really enjoy to hear about in this, this line of work. Um, we don't really compare ourselves to the state because an alternative school setting, that's not really an apples-to-apples kind of a comparison, but I was able to find um, a few other alternative high schools in the, in the state, spread out uh throughout the state. Um, like I shared last year, a lot of the alternative schools, when their, their graduation rate, their numbers are absorbed by the, by the reg- the, the, the regular high school in, in their community. Um, Junction City is that way, you know, Maze, Complete Maze High School is that way. Um, so, so some of these are, are kind of spread out. I was able to find Capital City in Topeka. Uh, Central School is actually in Atchison, uh Wichita Alternative, and then, of course, uh Garden City Alternative Education Center. So you kind of see, we're, we're right there in the middle with a lot of them, um below some, above some, and what, what mainly on this slide, what I, what I really like to see in the next two or three slides is, is the upward trend. We, we are, we are obviously moving in the right direction and, and like I said, a hundred percent attributed to the, the, the work and the effort that our teachers are putting in to, to connect with kids and to um get them to kind of value the first step in, 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 in the next step, which is, which is that high school diploma. We tell our kids a lot of times, no matter what they go on to do, a high school diploma is step one for, for all of them, for, for no matter what. So we, we really stress that a lot, kind of as we talked a little bit a couple of weeks ago. Um, very similar, we, we do have subgroups. Again, we don't, I don't um have anyone to compare them to really, but um these are just different subgroups. Our, our Hispanic uh subgroup population, our whites, our fifth-year graduates. And, and again, when, when I shared this with staff, what, what we emphasized is the upward trend of all of our subgroups. Um, which I, I feel, you know, even though, you know, we're not at the high eighties, you know, comparing ourselves to the rest of the state quite yet, but, but everything is moving in an upward trend from, from two thousand eighteen. And so that's, that's what we, we focused on. That's the success that, that we took away from, from our subgroup stats. And then again, here, our free and reduced lunch and ELL, starting in two thousand eighteen, uh, reduced lunch took a little bit of a dip. Like Mr. Nordby said, we, 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 it's hard to identify. We don't, we, we don't know these kids by name, um even though they are identified in the subgroup. But again, the upward trend from two thousand eighteen through our data this, this year. And then our blue, our blueprint for sustainable growth, um, we're, we're, we're starting with a building leadership team with, with building-wide representation. We have virtual, virtual academy uh representation. We have TEP. We have um the day school. It, it's, it's, it's an all-informed, all-encompassing building leadership team um that was, that was designed and, and, and established last school year. Um, improved communication to keep our staff informed. Um, we try to work very transparent as a building leadership team and me as a building leader of, of what we're trying to do and the direction that we're trying to move. Um, we do, we do weekly calendars. We do a, a lot of emails. We do a lot of Zooms. Um, different, different ways of communicating, but, but communicating and, and, and working on complete buy-in from, from our staff, you know, moving, moving the boat in the same direction. Um, we also work to try to identify trends. Uh, chronic absenteeism is one that we've addressed specifically this year. That number, that number for our building seems significantly high. And um one that we're working with, with the new um truancy officer. Um, we, you know, we're doing more home visits. We're contacting more parents and, and just sharing the importance of, again, completing that high school diploma as a first step to whatever steps two, three and four may be. Um, and then we also focus a lot with, with our school counselor and the, the programs and, and the, the different aspects that she addresses. Um, we address the social emotional character development needs of all of our students um equally and as passionately as we support the academics. Um, we try to teach the whole student. We try to develop them as, as successful individuals, whatever their division, whatever their um definition of success might be. We try to, we try to get them to what they envision as their success. And then lastly, we, we, we're, we're striving to continue and improve on community involvement and changing the narrative. Um, there are a lot of people in our community that, that, that either A, still don't know that we have an alternative high school or B, they just think that all the bad kids go there. And, and we have a lot of very successful kids that, that um like Mr. Nordby said, just needed, needed it in a different lens or needed to see it from a different angle. And um, and so we, we, we are striving to get out more in the community and, and, and get our kids involved. We were able to do before, pre-COVID, we were able to do some STEM night activities with, with, with the intermediate centers here in town. Um, we did some, we did some cleanup activities with, you know, we helped at the zoo. We did some different things like that, but always looking for ways, especially when, you know, when, when, when all the, all the COVID stuff, it, all the restrictions are over, looking for ways to get, to get our good kids out there in front of, in front of and partnering with members of the community. And that's how we see our, our, our numbers going up again next year and, and and the, the, the atmosphere and the, everything that surrounds our building moving in the right direction.
Well, thank you both. Um, any questions? Dana?
Sorry. Um, so I have a question for Mr. Felbus. Do you guys also have the um semester school and summer school programs?
Last year was the first year that we did that summer school, save the grade. Um, our, our, our summer school usually runs through the virtual academy, but we, we did do one. We do have, ours is actually quarter school because we are on nine-week grading, grading, you know, um terms and, and as opposed to the semesters like the high school. We're actually in quarter school right now with the grading, with the nine weeks ending last week. We just started quarter school today with our students. We have twelve kids participating in quarter school this nine weeks.
And how many did you have in the summer school program?
We had a total of seventeen that participated in the summer school. And, and of those seventeen, eleven of them were able to make up the classes that they needed to, to finish. We, we had a couple of virtual kids actually finish uh two days before the programs were printed. They, they were, they worked all the way up until that late graduation day. I, I honestly can't even remember when it was now, but.
So is it based on the same like parameters as semester school is in summer, like at the high school?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. The setup is still the same way. Um, if, if they have a fifty percent, between a fifty and a sixty, they qualify for quarter school. And then the wor- the work is provided by the teacher. They have to come in and complete enough work to earn a sixty percent in the class. And, and they were able to do that. Some kids, the only difference was the summer school um save the grade part of the summer school, we were able, we, we did whole days with them. We did three hours in the morning and another three hours in the afternoon. Um, and quarter school is usually just about a two and a half hour, um, three or four days, you know, after school in the evenings.
And then I wanted to ask about the um, you said face-to-face Spanish. So is that just a Spanish course or is it something else but taught in Spanish?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a Spanish one elective or um, we, we have a couple of students. Uh, Sandra Guoitier is, is a, a Spanish teacher at Kenneth Henderson and she had some time in her schedule. And we were able to, to work it out that she actually comes over and teaches our kids um Spanish, Spanish one. Or we have a, a couple of students, I believe, taking Spanish three um just because of, of, of their previous coursework. Um, but, but as we've talked about before, all of our electives used to be whatever we could get from Edge Annuity. We, we didn't have any face-to-face electives. And so we've grown that. Now we offer, I think, four, maybe five. Um, a few more if you count the read, the, the, what we offer through the, the Read One Eighty program.
And do those tend to be more popular with the students?
I think they're, they're, they're getting there um because kids would rather be doing and, and rather than just sitting in front of a computer. Um, I know that right now we have
Um, I know that right now we have, I believe, ten in our, our, this, this is the first year we've offered Spanish. Um, and it literally kind of fell into place a week or two before school started. We have about ten kids in there now. Um, we have fourteen kids in our walking and art classes. Um, because if you're in walking, you're also in art. They're, they're split. Um, and those are the same fourteen kids. Um, so, so yeah, pretty, pretty popular. When, when you consider right now, we have about seventy kids in, in, in our, in our school, not counting those that are remote. Um, it, it, they're, they're pretty popular with the students.
And then just one last thing on the acronym S E C D. So I got the social emotional. What's C D?
Character development.
Character, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Mor, Nordby. Thank you, Mr. Felvis. Appreciate your time and all that you're doing for our kids at both of the schools. Really appreciate it. And good luck with the level five the next couple of weeks.
I appreciate, I want to say I appreciate all your support. And when uh I talked to my team about doing this presentation, they, they wanted me to reiterate, uh, as I did earlier, the presentation. Uh, the grace that you, that you showed towards our graduates who were kind of, as I said, had the rug pulled out of, uh, from underneath them fifteen sixteenths of the way through their high school education. Um, the amount of stress on some of our kids and their families at that time was, was really great, was really great, really large. And uh, you know, uh, we asked for that grace, but you guys instantly provided it. And I just wanted to say, uh, once again, thank you uh for taking that into consideration. Um, it, it, it really did make the difference for, for a few of our kids who were just trying to figure out, okay, I've put all this work in and I'm almost there. How in the world do I get this done? And at the time we made those decisions and we asked you for that, we didn't know how we were going to get this done. We had just shut school down for the year. We really didn't know how this was going to work. So uh, I just wanted to say one more time that I, I do appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you. I have a good evening. I think that takes us to the COVID update with Glenda.
All right, um. My presentation just disappeared. There it is. Oh, weird. I'm having technical difficulties. Let me try one more time. Every time I click share, the whole screen goes blank. So I will try one more time here. And try it this way. There we go.
Hey, Glenda, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Sorry, um, Madam President, sorry, we were having some technical challenges and I couldn't get unmuted. I'm sure somebody did that on purpose, but um, so.
Well, we didn't want to tell you, Dr. Carlin, but.
I just wanted to back up just a little bit and um, really compliment the high school and the alternative um center and, and point out to the, the board and the community that the reports that the board has heard over the last two meetings, um, the report on post-secondary success and the report tonight on graduation rate are both state board outcomes as well as um, uh significant goals in our strategic plan. Um, and while we certainly have room to improve, I think the trends that we're seeing and the progress that's being made, and like both Mr. Felvis and Mr. Nordby commented, due to the hard work of staff and students and families really focusing on those things, it, i- is really encouraging. So um, it uh, you know, it's nice to, to know that um our plan aligns with the state and the outcomes they're trying to achieve and that we're starting to see some positive results, and not just for a year, but trends of, I think, um good growth and positive results over time. So I, I would have said that sooner, but I couldn't get unmuted. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. I think they're doing some great work at both of the schools. So appreciate the information. Glenda, I think you're up now.
Okay, can you see the presentation now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. I forgot what part we were on, so uh, it is a COVID update, but uh, whatever part we're on now or however many times I've presented now, it's another one. So the first thing um, I want to talk about or show you is our impact in the community, the positivity rate in the community. And in this case, unlike our high schools, uh, we don't want to see the upward trend, and unfortunately, that is what we're seeing. Um, the last couple of weeks have both been over a forty percent positivity rate. And um, that is, that is uh way higher than what we want to see it in order to be able to have school. When we look at uh new positive cases by the week, again, you see these going up. The week that ended on ten thirty-one, the numbers went down. However, one of the things that is happening now is a lot of folks are going elsewhere to get the COVID test done. So they're running to Dodge. We, we actually had a staff member I know drove to Mead. Um, we have several going to Lakin, and those results aren't always coming back to our own health department in, in the time that we have our meetings with them each week. So um, there's a, a bit more of a lag happening right now with those numbers. So what does that look like for us? On this chart, if you will look at it, the orange are our year-to-date through eleven-five um total positive cases for students. The uh blue breaks it down by week. So what is the average by the week? And this is a daily average. So again, we're seeing those numbers go up um, much higher than what we would like. How does this impact our attendance? So this is daily attendance, absences, and then averaged by the week. So the blue are all COVID-related absences, and then the orange is all student absences. Again, you see a real uh big uptick here uh toward the end of October. How many students are sent home each day with symptoms? We're actually starting to see a little bit better uh trend with this one. And I think our families are recognizing that, you know, we are screening the kids um at the beginning of the day, and the nurses are going to call and send them home. So um, parents are doing a better job, I think, of probably recognizing the symptoms also in our community and keeping them home. So that is dropping just a little bit. This is our weekly attendance rate. Um, and again, you can see that we've been holding pretty steady throughout the year in the ninety percent attendance rate in all of our buildings and then toward the end of October, we took a dip and, and that has continued. That trend is continuing. This is staff. And so what I want you to look at is the blue is daily absences for any reason. And then the orange is absences that are COVID-related. And those are both all staff. So the blue and the orange, blue is all absences, orange is COVID for all staff. Then if you look at the gray and the yellow, those are classroom staff, so our teachers and our pairs. So the, the gray is all absences and the yellow is COVID. And again, unfortunately, we're seeing that upward trend um in our classroom staff, and that is resulting in what we are seeing now in red buildings and red classrooms because we're not able to keep them staffed. New positive staff per week. Um, a steady upward trend here. Uh, the orange is overall um totals, and then the blue is by week. You can see the jump last eleven-one to eleven-five last week to thirty. And um, in just one day, we're probably going to, I can estimate that we're going to beat that. Because we had, and we had twenty total positive cases just today, students and staff. Um, nine of those were staffed today. So we're already well on our way in just one day of beating that, that positivity rate. So this is a, a chart, um, and I'm going to give Dr. Carlin credit where credit is due here. He's been keeping track of a lot of these and had built a lot of these graphs and charts for us. But this one compares the United States numbers, the Kansas numbers, Phinney County, and then USD four-five-seven. Um, what is particularly noticeable to me, and I don't know if I can even point that out, but if we look at percent infected in the United States, uh, almost three percent here, two points, two, two point seven-two. And then you jump over to Kansas and it's two point eight-two. Again, very similar. Kansas is following the United States here. And then you come over to Phinney County and we're above that. Phinney County infected, eight point four-three percent. And the school is under that at seven point eight-six. So then let's go down a week and go to population infected, two point eight-two in the United States. We move over to Kansas infected. Kansas is higher now, three point, just a little over three percent. Now let's go over to Phinney County infected, eight point seven-seven. Huge difference here. And now unfortunately, if you look at our four-five-seven staff, we have now surpassed just a little bit, but we've surpassed uh Phinney County. And um, this trend is, is very worrisome. Um, the numbers compared to the state compared nationally, and then unfortunately, our school numbers. Um, part of our concern that we're hearing when we talk to the health department is the strain that this is taking on our not just our school community and the changes that we're dealing with, but on our medical community and trying to find services uh for staff. What we don't want to have happen is our staff or any person, for that matter, needing to go to the hospital and the hospital says, I don't have a bed. Um, that's, that's really scary. And we can see that even in, in some of these other numbers here. So those are all the numbers and the update I have for you. Unfortunately, it's not as good news. Uh, chart's going in the same direction, but that's not what we like as far as the last presentation, but um kind of sobering news this, this go-around. Any questions?
I have one. And Glenda, I don't know if it's for you or more for Heath. Um, I know we've talked about substitutes in the past, and we've seen the numbers coming for substitutes because we've had so many people that have been out. Are we still using a majority of the, the existing staff for those substitutes? Or have we increased the amount of substitutes that we have coming in from outside the, the district that are forming a substitute? Where are we at with that?
Well, unfortunately, we have had a major strain on our subpool. Um, really since the beginning of the school year. Uh, so we've done a lot of things to try to increase that pool with, you know, recruitment and uh, we are one of the highest-paid school districts in the area. I think there's one other that pays a, a higher rate daily than we do. But we offer some incentives for people who work specific amounts of days, uh, those kinds of things. But we're probably in the fourteen to twenty-person range in terms of utilization of subs. And so our, our rate, our fill rate has been on the decline for quite some time. Um, probably more so, uh, the last two weeks, we've seen a little bit of, uh, or the last two days, we've seen a little bit of uptick. Um, part of that being contributed to uh not having as many activities uh right now. So that's helped not having a number of requests for subs. But yes, it's definitely a strain on our current staff members to fill unfilled positions or vacant positions that we have on a daily basis.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I wondered because I was I'm a little concerned about staff burnout, you know, if we have the same consistent staff that are going in and filling as substitutes for other classes. So I'm a little bit concerned about where we were at with that. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. It's an absolute concern. And again, it's uh, it's attributable to our staff and them just continuing to step up and uh, take on more. I mean, they've, they've just done an exceptional job to get us to where we're at right now, to have ten weeks of school. Um, but you are right, that is definitely a valid concern.
I've got a quick question.
Please mark.
Thank you. You know, Glenda, I know that there is um, there's cer, a certain reality in what um our staff goes through and what our parents go through when a, say, a, a family member tests positive. There's a protocol there from the health department to uh quarantine. And of course, the purpose of that quarantine is to see if any symptoms uh come up for members of the family or, you know, if, if our staff has a spouse that tests positive, then there's a, a real concern uh that others in the family might uh test positive. So of course, that quarantine is a time to, you know, we, we got to go through the fourteen days and um, but a key part of that, of course, if any symptoms show up at all. Um, you know, I'm, I'm sure we've made it apparent, I'm sure to the staff, that, well, don't come back to work. As tough as it is, as shorthanded as we are, um, it seems like all of our efforts are for naught if we're not careful about coming back to work when there might be a few symptoms and we don't get tested. So I'm wondering, just to, just to clarify, is there any kind of requirement on staff to get tested after quarantine?
If, if they have tested positive, then uh the, the health department gives them a release to come back to work. And they tell them when it's appropriate for them to come back to work. And the same is if they're quarantined. So if they're not, if they don't have any symptoms, but their spouse is positive, the health department also gives them a back-to-work note for that as well. So the health department is the one, they are the ones that quarantine them. And they say, you're quarantined for fourteen days because you've been exposed to your spouse. Then they also give them a work release when they can come back.
Okay, and I presume that work release means that they um, well, let's say they've got kids that are in sports, and if they say they have symptoms, then they need to get tested under the protocol of the health department. But if they don't want to show positive so that they can keep their kids in sports, that would be, of course, a problem, right?
So, so are, are you saying that they aren't reporting and sending their kids to sports?
Yeah, I mean, if, if they don't want us to test positive, this is anybody, you know, but they don't want to test positive because then their kids will go through another quarantine and, and be withheld from sports or debate or whatever the, you know, the kids really want to participate in. It's that challenge, I think, that we have running into these circumstances where if, if we say we have a symptom, then we have to get tested. And if we have, get tested and we test positive, now our loved ones are out of the picture for the recovery period um, uh, until the uh, you know, uh, until the, the concern for others getting it from us is passed. So there's a. Go ahead, Steve.
I'm sorry, um, we, we had a meeting with the health department today. It was, we normally meet at least twice a week with them. And that was, I think, kind of related. One of the concerns that they have is that, I think, they, they indicated to us that they do feel that sometimes people in general are not completely honest with them when they're doing their disease investigations for a variety of reasons. Um, you know, and I think for three weeks now, we've been trying very hard to raise awareness in the community about the trajectory that our community's been headed on with this. You know, and there's two, two primary goals here. One is to, to, to get our kids back in school, to keep our kids in school face-to-face as much as possible. That has been a goal of ours from the very beginning. The other is to keep our businesses open in this community. Nobody wants to get back to the situation that we faced in the spring where where much of our community and communities all across the state and the country were shut down. In order for that to happen, you know, we've all got to recognize that this is a public health emergency and we have to take it seriously. And we may need to modify our behavior for hopefully a short term. You know, things like social distancing, things like wearing masks, things like, you know, maybe not having the birthday parties that we want to have or doing Thanksgiving or Christmas a little differently while we're dealing with this. Because, you know, I think one of the things we're learning here is if our numbers in this community continue like they are, I was at the City Commission and the County Commission meetings last week and heard the CEO of the hospital make a plea because they're so overloaded, they're at or near capacity. They're running into problems when they need to transfer patients to other facilities because there's not space. There's times that they don't have room to accept transfers or new patients. That's all information that the hospital reported at those meetings. So, you know, it's important that we all understand we're kind of in this together. Nobody wants to be dealing with all this. We have some priorities, some goals that we would like to see happen. But through that, we've also got to take the reasonable steps to keep our students and our staff safe. And so, and our family members and others in the community. Mr. Nordby shared a story with me today about a student of ours who was in an accident and had serious injuries. And our local hospital didn't have room to accommodate him. So the student had to be lifelighted to Denver. Fortunately, it sounds like the student is going to recover. But the family is now going to be confronted with a pretty big bill for a lifeflight trip to Denver that might not have, probably wouldn't have needed to happen if our hospital wouldn't have been devoting so many resources to intensive care resources to COVID. So it's not just the COVID things that are being impacted as we're dealing with all this. So I'm sorry to birdwalk a little bit there, but I think it really goes to your question. And that question is, you know, I think it is important that we all understand we've got to be willing to address this. And we've got to be, understand that there's going to be some inconveniences. We're all going to need to make some sacrifices in order to navigate through this. And our ultimate goals, of course, are our neighbors' health, are having kids in school as much as possible, and having our businesses that are able to be open and serve our community and maintain, you know, their bottom line so they can stay in business. And if you look at the numbers across our state, if you look at the numbers across the country, and if you look at our local numbers, the trajectory on all those is not where we want to see it right now. And you bring up an excellent point in that we've got to be willing to be honest. And when we're not feeling well, you know, the attitude before was get tough and, you know, "I can make it through work, people need me, people are counting on me." But quite honestly, right now, what we need you to do if you're not feeling well is stay home, get healthy, make sure that you're not going to be, make sure you're not going to be infecting other people, and take care of yourselves and your family. So thanks for pointing that out.
It's just a word of encouragement, really. And it takes constantly, you know, I'm amazed at our staff and how well we're doing. The numbers sort of come from where they come from. But thank you for that, Dr. Carlin. That was my point, is we just kind of have to encourage each other to make sure that we keep the eye on the ball. Otherwise, a lot of this sacrifice is sort of slips into sort of second string. Thank you.
And I think, Mark, that you did point it out. Our staff are working extremely hard and they want to be open. We've got the best staff out there and they are giving it all they've got. And our principals also, you saw the little treats that Andrea took around to her staff. And several of our principals have done something similar today as we switched levels. So, you know, they're doing their best to try to keep morale up. And it's hard because they're covering, you know, if they've got a planned period, they're going somewhere else and covering for someplace else. Our pairs have stepped up and our classified staff have stepped up because if there's an adult in the building and we've got a teacher that's willing to zoom in that is either positive or quarantined because of a spouse, like you said, then we're pulling any available adult to go in and supervise the class while the teacher zooms in. So that could be a pair, for example. And we've never done anything like that before. But we are all hands on deck right now and people are really stepping up to help.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you so much, Glenda, for the numbers and the information and appreciate it. So hopefully everyone can keep on keeping on. We're just a couple more weeks from having a little bit of a break, hopefully, so. Thank you. Okay, I think that takes us to new business with regard to the KSB convention. So, and you should have in your board packet some information there. There's only one nominee for the president-elect designee, and that is Jason Wimbolt. And then they're looking at some amendments to the KSB constitution. And then we need to select a delegate and an alternate delegate. And they're breaking up the delegate assembly into two parts this time. So one part will be on December 3 at 11:30, and it will be virtual. And then the other part will be, I want to, I think it's the 20th or the 21st. And that will be when, so December 3, they'll be voting on the president-elect designee and the constitutional amendments. And then the 20th of January will be when they vote on the legislative agenda. And they don't have everything done yet on the legislative agenda. The Legislative Committee met again this past Saturday, I think, to finalize that. So hopefully, we'll be getting that information out here pretty soon. So, but I know that I'll be participating in the conference and Alex will be as well. I don't know if anyone else wants to participate in that. And then we need to decide how we want to direct the delegate and the alternate delegate to vote with regard to this. So I don't know how you want to handle this, if you want to talk about the two items or if you want to decide with regard to the delegate and the alternate delegate first. I'll kind of, that's what we have to discuss in this new business. So I'll kind of let you guys start from there with regard to the discussion.
Does anybody else want to be an alternate delegate?
Or delegate?
Or delegate.
Laura is not, I'm not volunteering for either position, just to make that clear. When we designate a delegate and alternate delegate is one possibility with regard to the voting process. Would it be a possibility to leave it to the discretion of the delegate and alternate delegate to vote as a representative of our body as they see fit? Or that is not protocol? We would want to take a position tonight.
I think some of it has to be at their discretion because some of this could happen from the floor as well. So there could be, sorry, there could be some, there could be a nomination from the floor for a president-elect designee. It's highly unlikely, but it is possible. And then there could be some other amendments that are brought. And then there's definitely amendments that are brought up at the legislative portion as well. But we need to at least give them some guidance as to what our thoughts are with regard to this. So that way, there's some direction.
Okay.
So if you speak up too loudly, you get nominated.
Say that again.
I said, if you speak up too loudly, you get nominated for delegate.
I think I'll keep the mute off just in the off chance that you move faster than I do. Having said that, would it be appropriate for me to nominate Laura as the delegate and Alex as our alternate delegate? Would that be?
I would second that.
There's a motion and a second. Sorry, Janine, I think you were getting ready for there and I was trying to get Tim to do it, sorry.
Hey, he just beat me to it and I'm good with it.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would just want to say, I looked through that language, particularly the changes to the Constitution there. I think that's what they called it, the Constitution. And I didn't see any concerns. I know from experience how that discussion happens on the floor. But I'm very confident in the, those that have been nominated will represent us well in that forum.
Stephanie, any other comments, discussion? Stephanie, do you want to do the roll call?
Laura?
Aye.
Doctor Hanigan?
Hardy, aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll tell you, I was with Jason on the KSB board for a while now and I'm really excited about him being the president-elect designee. I've been thinking about putting my name up and decided not to when I heard that he was putting his name in. So I think he'll do a good job. And he likes the Royals, so, you know, there's that. But his platform seems really good and I'm looking forward to what he's doing. So unless there's someone else who's the equal or better caliber, I don't think we'll go wrong with him. And then the constitutional amendments, I think, seem to make sense. So I think we should be fine going along with those unless you have any other concerns or questions about the rationale behind them.
Could I ask once again, Laura, if we need a formal motion or if we could assent by just our comments here?
I think just the comments are fine.
Okay. Well, I feel confident, if you feel confident. And I'm also aware of the fact that it's dynamic and there could be changes made at the last minute. I trust your judgment.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns, questions about what's going on with this? Okay. Okay, that, I believe, then leads us into board open discussion. So, Dr. Hanigan, do you have anything?
Just a slow finger for the mute button. Thanks for asking, I do not, and I apologize for missing my last meeting.
Jennifer?
I don't have anything.
Janine?
I really don't have anything, well, tonight. I apologize, I wasn't able to be here last meeting because I was helping making arrangements for my dad. But it's good to be back.
Mark?
I don't really have anything. I sort of said my piece earlier, the one concern. It's just amazing how we keep going through the plan that the district has put together in response to COVID, keeping in mind our goal of educating kids and keeping our staff and kids healthy. I still think they're doing an amazing job. We have to encourage each other, I think. And I've heard from a lot of folks about the Level 5 versus Level 6. And I don't know, you know, there isn't any answer. We're just sort of feeling our way through it. The numbers are concerning, both in the amount of substitutes that we need, the number that we're able to fill, and the number that go unfilled except by existing staff in the various centers. You know, it's amazing what they're doing. The hybrid that we're doing now, you know, kids are there half the time, but staff are there all the time. And we continue to have that staff challenge at numbers very similar to the community. I don't know if we're really ahead of the community, Glenda, on that. But of course, there's a tick or two there that suggests that. I don't know, just, we all need encouragement and I think those flowers were fabulous. And that's the kind of environment we just have to encourage. And like I say, the staff, they choke me up sometimes, the extent that they go to watch out for each other. So, and that's my comments.
Dana?
This is piggyback on Mark. It was really fun to put faces with names for the Crystal Apple nominees because I happened to run into Mr. Kay, as I'm going to call him because I don't want to destroy his last name. And he had a group of kids doing calculus on a Saturday morning. So that, I mean, you know, he must be an amazing teacher to get that kind of dedication. So that's really cool. And it's nice that some of those teachers get recognized, just like Mark said, because we have a lot doing an amazing job, so.
Dana, we cheat and just call him Mr. Bijou.
Alex?
Hey, just for some of the schools that went to Level 6, I want to give a huge shout out to the district and the IT department for getting the Wi-Fi and hotspot set up for those kids that will be at home and don't have a hotspot at their house. So I want to give a shout out for those people to do, to keep doing the amazing job that they're doing. So thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for making the transition to 5 or 6 this week. I know it's a tough thing. And shout out to all the parents who are making the adjustment as well. I know it's a tough thing that you're having to adjust as well. And for the teachers, thank you for all that you're doing. Good luck to the Crystal Apple nominees for November 19. And then Russell Child Development's doing their Fantasy Tree Festival virtually this year. So hopefully, they can get a really... this year, so hopefully they can get a really good turnout for their fundraiser also. And then I think that's all we've got coming up in the next couple of weeks. Dr. Carlin, do you have anything, or have we permanently muted you finally?
Of course I've got something. So, again, echo what many of you have mentioned, and that is, we have an amazing staff, whether that be the teachers in the classrooms, the paras that support them right there, our bus drivers, our nutrition staff, our technology staff, the administrators, the John Spokes with custodians and maintenance, and, you know, and I'm going to, I'm missing people, but I could go on and on and on. And truly, not a single job that we have in this district has been, has been untouched by COVID. People have to, have had to change how they do their jobs. We've had to do different things in our jobs to support our students and our families and our staff and one another through this. And the response from everybody all across the district has been amazing. And of course, COVID has touched people in, in all those areas. I do want to, I do want to mention that because we moved to level five this week, doesn't, unfortunately, doesn't mean things can't get worse and we might have to move to level six. We have three of our buildings right now that started the week at level six, one of them that was part of last week at level six, which is our fully remote. We have a couple other that we're watching very closely, that, that in the next day or two may have the need to, to move to level six. And of course, you know, we'll make our decision most likely at the end of the week, but could be sooner if things continue on a, on an accelerating trend. And I certainly appreciate that our staff and our community is having to be flexible and making adjustments to that. From the beginning, our plan has been about following our data, the evidence, our experience as we have moved through this, and not making a prediction and, and, and trying to predict too far ahead. But our data right now is very concerning in, in our community and in our schools. I was at, I mentioned I was at the city commission and county commission meetings last week. There's a special meeting of the city commission this week. I'll be there again. I have not actively participated in a request for a mask mandate, but I have presented data about what our schools are confronted with, and I have asked those groups to do whatever it takes to help turn the needle on the COVID activity in our community. It may be a mask mandate that's the best thing. It may be other things. And I certainly appreciate the relationship that the district has with our county health experts, with the physicians in this community, and the medical community. And certainly, this is their area of expertise more so than it is mine as a professional educator. But I truly hope that our community can come together on this, can understand what's at stake with the choices and the decisions that we make. No one wants to have our, any of our governmental entities impose restrictions upon us, including the restriction of our kids can't come to school but every other day, or maybe have to do remote learning for a period of time. But we also have the well-being of people in our community and of our community as a whole that has to be part of that consideration. I can't emphasize again enough, you know, one of the themes with the Crystal Apple tonight is about how amazing our staff is, and how amazing our, our staff has done to provide 10 weeks of face-to-face instruction for the students and the families in, in our community. Lastly, I just want to call attention, I think we sent out to the board some, some draft thoughts on a procedure for public comment if we should have to stay in this Zoom format for meetings. We really didn't intend for the board to have discussion necessarily tonight on that, or certainly to take action, but I think it would be something that might be appropriate to do at the next meeting, in case we have to continue with more Zoom meetings, or we reach a point that those have to happen at some point in the future. Because we, we want to continue to be transparent. We want to continue to allow the public to participate, and we want to make sure, I want to make sure that we can clearly communicate how to do that if we, if we have to stay in this mode of, of being a little more virtual with our meetings going forward. So please read over that, share your thoughts with Laura or with me. And I would suspect that there will be some kind of a discussion about that at our, at our next meeting. So that's all I have. Thanks. And if you don't have anything going on, next Thursday night, not this Thursday night, but next Thursday night, the Crystal Apple's having a heck of a virtual event, I hear. So join us. Thanks.
Well, and just as a reminder, and usually we get almost a proclamation, but I guess with the virtual system that we're under, American Education Week is November 16th to the 20th, so starting next Monday, celebrating our teachers. So stay tuned. Hopefully, we'll see some really cool things coming from NEA for that. And usually, we do some things as well, special for our teachers. Hopefully, we'll still be able to do some things for them next week to celebrate them for all the wonderful things that they do, and celebrate public education as well. So, and we'll try to make the public comment things an action item for the, probably not the next meeting, because the next meeting is a payables meeting, I think. So maybe the meeting after that, which will be the full meeting. So, the next meeting of the Board of Education will take place on Monday, December 7th, at 6:00 PM at the Board Meeting Room at the Educational Support Center. If we are at level five or level six, it will be by Zoom as well. We do have a reason to go into executive session, so if we could have a motion for that, and I'm going to say probably 30 minutes, probably, Alex.
Okay. So, Madam President, I move we go into executive session, but 30 minutes to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception in a coma, beginning at 8:25. And the open meeting will resume in the Board Meeting Room at 8:55. Does that work for everybody?
I think so. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? Okay. Stephanie, do you want to do the roll call?
Laura?
Aye.
Dr. Hanigan?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
And I believe everybody should have another, a different Zoom link to use for the executive session. Everybody have that? Okay. So you'll have a few minutes to transition to that. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks, Steve.
Bye.
Can you hear me all right?
Okay, we're back in open session. This time I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
If I Alex, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Janine, any discussion? Stephanie, you want to do the roll?
Laura?
Aye.
Dr. Hannigan? Dr. Hannigan?
Hi.
Dana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Mark? Mark? Mark, can you hear us?
I think he's off.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Alex?
Hi.
All for a really good meeting, have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.